Welcome everyone. Welcome to our last lunch and learn for this series and for this year. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional owners and custodians of the land and those of the land we are on, the peoples of the Coolman Nation. Today, we're looking at permeable pavement, which uses crumb rubber. We as Ecologic consider crumb rubber a priority material for recycling. And there are a number of potential uses. Currently, we estimate that over fifty-one million passenger tyres reach the end of their life each year. And less than five percent of those waste tyres, around eight million tyres, are recovered and properly managed within Australia. So figures vary, but it's whatever it is, it's huge. Permeable pavement is a fabulous use. It's a great idea and we'll hear that there are an enormous number of benefits for that. So I will just quickly go to some housekeeping for those of you who may not have been here before. This session runs for thirty minutes. We have ten minutes of questions at the end. You are on mute, but there's a Q and A in a chat and if you pop your questions into there, we'll address those at the end. But I'll stop now and I will welcome Vanessa and Si onto the screen.
Hello.
And hand over to Vanessa to run the interview. Thanks Vanessa.
Thanks Cheryl. Good afternoon, everyone. Si, I know Cheryl just introduced you, but can you tell us a bit more about your role and where you work?
Yeah, thanks for that Vanessa. Hi, everyone. I'm Si Thautay. I'm a senior coordinator, stormwater and drainage at Yarra City Council, where we get to do a lot of innovative work as being in a metropolitan council and we are trying to reach sustainability targets by twenty thirty. So we are looking at all this kind of innovative work.
Which we love. So today we are talking about permeable pavement. Can you tell us a bit about this innovation?
Sure. So a couple of years back, Yarra City Council was looking for sustainable solutions and using renewable product. So when we came across Tyres stewardship Australia and University of Melbourne, where we came across this product and we thought of giving this a go and using it on one of our car parks and also, you know, low traffic areas. So, you know, this could be possibly used on a highly trafficked area if proven in future. So that's where it's all started. This is a pilot study and we are currently monitoring it.
So you mentioned car parks there. What other applications is it currently being used for?
Currently, as in Yarra City, this has been used in a car park. However, as far as I'm aware, this product has been used in Adelaide on a low traffic roads. So rather than a conventional pavement, this pavement has been used.
And shared user paths, I imagine is another.
That's correct. Shared user paths, footpaths, you know, open space pathways, you know, bike paths and so on, that these light, you know, porous pavements have been used. Yep.
That's great. So how did the idea come about for using recycled materials for pavement?
So you know, we currently use impermeable roads, which contribute to flash flooding and permeable pavements like this, unlike the conventional asphalt paving, allows water to seep through the surface, reducing that stormwater runoff and also ponding within that particular area. And also, you know, reduce that pollution in waterways because it seeps through the various membranes and then it reaches the waterway. So current, you know, as I said before, our current pavers are not suitable for the highly trafficked road areas, but it's doing the job and it's the cutting-edge technology. So this is why we're utilizing it.
And what is the composition of the material and why were these materials selected?
So again, as I mentioned, stewardship Australia, Tyres diversity for Australia and us along with the porous lane looked at this product. And this product has permeability five times higher than a recommended international guidelines, as well as this uses fifty percent of Australian recycled tyres. And you know, that reduces the landfill load. So this reduces that load going into our landfills and also, you know, improves the quality of the pavers and reduces the risk of flash floods in urban areas by soaking up that water.
So you mentioned crumb rubber, but is it also made from other recycled products?
It does consider some quantity of the glass. However, that's a mixture used together with the tyres. So it's used as a binding materials basically.
Great. So what are the specific projects that Yarra City Council are working on?
Currently, only two projects we have completed, Ramsden Oval and Rethlin Street Car Park. So one is the car park for the big oval where, you know, you have a number of cars parked and there's a traffic areas during the sports event on the weekend. And another one, we used it in a, again, low traffic area such as a small local street so that, you know, you don't get many vehicle movements into that. And also that caters for the street trees, you know, as well. So we don't water those street trees. However, the porous surface does, you know, provide or supply water to those trees.
Were you gonna show us some pictures of these projects today?
Yeah, sure. I can take you through them. Let me know when you can see my screen.
Not yet. And we can see it now. So yeah, we would love to know a bit about the installation methodologies and the testing requirements. So you can talk us through that as well.
Sure. So I'll take you through, first of all, the context, then the construction information and both of the sites, Rethlin and Ramsden Oval. So how it according to the development phase is like, we, Yarra have developed the strategic plan, strategic integrated water management plan, which is what is a driving factor for us in terms of council, like how we progressively, we need to look at these innovative practices. Since then, we were in touch with University of Melbourne, Porous Lane, Tyre, Stewardship Australia and other partners where Engeni, who are our design consultants for this project and the research and replication of this is still managed by Melbourne University. So then we'll look at how it is constructed and what kind of capacity building we are doing in-house. So just to give you a bit of a context of how this came through. Again, Yarra Strategic Plan, Yarra IWM Plan, where we look at, you know, effectively planning, designing and delivering this kind of innovative works. We do go through community engagement as well as we do lead internal organization change as well to, you know, look out for all these innovative and recycled materials for any projects. Why permeable pavement in Yarra? Again, as I mentioned, it diverts the waste tyre fields from landfill by reusing them in an engineered permeable pavement. And the mission is to minimize the waste tyres going into the landfills and, you know, mitigate the risk of flash flooding in urban areas. Again, current traditional pavers are not doing it yet. So these permeable pavements, unlike the conventional asphalt, allows the water to pass through the surface, gets contained within the tank and then that reduces the risk of flooding and reduces the runoff and pollution in waterways. So that's why we looked at it. About these pilot projects, as I mentioned before, the two locations, Ramsden Street Oval Car Park and Rethlin Street Car Park. These two projects were funded by Delp as well as Sustainability Victoria. And our major partners within this project are Engeni, Aussie Civil, who was the contractor who's delivered the work. University of Melbourne, who's involved in the research and development of these works. And also Porous Lane, who's the, another key player who's delivered the porous pavements on site. So let's take you to the Ramsden Street Oval. I know this is a very small image and this is, I'm trying to show you the location within the inner metropolitan area. So that's how congested that area is currently. This permeable paving car parks are delivered for ten spots within this area. And the Star Water Media Contamination Testing Pits have been installed at inlet and outlet, just to know what we get through the pavers and what we get out of the tank isn't polluting the water, rather reducing that as well. Next slide. I'm not sure whether you'll be able to see this. However, the payment makeup design, we have developed it through our research and, you know, discussions throughout the period of design, which I'll take you through a bit later. So I'll quickly share the slides further, which will give you an idea of composition and will be discussed along with photos later on. And we go Rethlin Street. Again, as I said, it's a residential street, low traffic area. This is how it looks like. The trees in between street trees are passively irrigated by these pavers and they are healthy and growing well currently. Again, that's the composition of the porous material and I'll take you to that later on. And as I said, strictly irrigation has been maintained throughout this area and the porous pavers are, you know, catering that need of the trees well. Construction. The I'll take you to construction of Rethlin Street first. So this is a low traffic area. What we done, step one, we done earthworks and underground assets. As you are all aware, we look for underground assets. We do service proving, depping, any other information we have throughout the area, we look out for that. Step two, we install the geocell and the screening layer, which is a Star Water Media. Again, after installing the geocell, we connected all our drainage pipes, which are required for the tree as well as to the junction pit there so that it can be taken out to the waterways. Permeable paver installation. So the permeable pavers were installed on a good day where it's not too hot or not too cold or rainy, of course, otherwise the paver material wouldn't stick properly. So that's what we needed to see and ensure that we have a right day for installation. And the final installation was the tree planting. So after the installation, you know, the tree was happy and healthy. Then we move on to the Ramsden Street Oval Car Park, which is close by. This was a big project. So we had a lot, as you can see here, we had a lot of challenges with underground services there. So we had to go through a lot of earthworks and underground assets determination. We had to relocate some of them, as you could see in photo two, getting the tank in. We lined up the geocell and a screening layer and also activated media filter, which was provided by Star Water Solutions. Construction, again, we installed this permeable paver on top of those geocells on a good day so that it's not too hot, not too cold and the paver sticks to the surface really well. And third part of this was the community education. So Yarra City Council has also invested a lot on community education part. And we are currently promoting healthy habits within our community through this, these websites. If you want, you can, you know, go to Yarra City Council's webpage and have a look at how the Ramsden Street Oval Car Park works as well as we're promoting the Rethlin Street Car Park. And yeah, that's how we are promoting the recycled material to the community and we are taking one step forward as a council.
That's really great. Thank you for running us through those examples. It's so good to have two examples of the material installed in Yarra City Council. How are they performing so far?
They're performing well currently. Definitely I can tell you in terms of, you know, reducing the ponding on those locations. However, if you ask me in terms of the water quality monitoring, we are currently working as with ARC and University of Melbourne for the testing and this will be a three years constant monitoring work, which will be initiating soon. So we don't have the results yet. However, we are taking the right steps towards that.
So there really is a dual benefit of using recycled materials and being able to treat water runoff. That's great.
That's correct. Yep.
So what challenges and barriers have you faced so far in the implementation of this?
There are various challenges. As you know, this is an innovative product. So first of all, we needed to understand how the product performs, how we can, you know, get the designs done appropriately. There, as you can see, there should be many iterations of the design to and fro. And we had to understand ourselves, like how would this perform? How would that perform? What kind of geocell you need and what kind of, how much star media we need on top of that geocell and so on. And also the right quantity of the porous pavement on top, which of course Porous Lane had made our life easier as they have been testing that. And that's a very rigid testing they have done on their product. And they come up with a solution. So now it was made easy. Another thing is like what I mentioned before, we had to put it on a low traffic area. So we had to come up with a car park. We had to ensure that, you know, it's not highly trafficked area. Also, we are getting asked questions such as, you know, how many years this, you know, paver will last for or what kind of maintenance you need? And this is what we had to consider before even installing this product on site, that yes, this can, you know, cater for, you know, ten years. We need very low maintenance and also, you know, how we can ensure that it's neat and clean through the routine maintenance. So that we invested in that as well. We can't just place a product there and ignore it, if you know what I mean. And these are all things. Also, we needed to ensure on Rethlin Street that the car parks are available for the local residents. So, you know, when you're doing any project, we need to close off the site for some time. And the residents are not happy because you take on their carports as well as by placing few trees there, you have reduced the number of car parks. So you needed to, you know, communicate with them. You needed to ensure that those benefits for future are informed to the residents and they've been accepted by the residents. So these were all the challenges we come across as well as the, another good challenge and it was complex that to find the contractor to deliver these innovative works because not all the contractors are catering for these needs because they are set for the conventional material setup. They just come in on site, lay the pavement, go home. However, we have to work with a contractor who's willing to do this kind of innovative work. So we found contractor Aussie Civil, who is already on the Yarra City Council's panel. And yes, Porous Lane had to educate both of us on how to do things, how to lay the material. And as you can see, the sites are performing well. So now I thank my contractor as well for doing a great job and, you know, being there, listening to the experts such as Porous Lanes and, you know, work with us. So those were the things which were very complex, but we got through them.
Well, that's great. I can see some questions flooding in. So we'll move to them very shortly.
Yeah.
Just, was there any last words of wisdom before we move to the questions from the audience?
Yes. Last word of wisdom is whenever you work with the innovative materials, you ensure that you plan well. Also, you need to ensure that, as I mentioned, you need to get a right set of combinations such as, you know, your designer, your contractor and also wisely choose your area. Because sometimes community, dealing with the community can be complex. So choose the right area for the pilot studies, you know, get to the project, deliver that project effectively and then show the positive outcome to the community. So that's what I would say.
Great. That's, that's great. Well, I'm jumping in. So we can have a look at the, at the questions. We've got a few questions here. I'm just popping up also Ecologic's email address and website. So if there's any further questions, you can ask us there and we can pass them on to Si. So the first one is what about the risk of deterioration of subgrade material due to allowing water to seeping into the surface? So some of the, we showed that, yeah.
No, as I mentioned before, that the material is catered for minimum of ten years as per the porous lane. And it won't be deteriorating prior to that. However, as I said, this is a pilot study. So as a pioneer, we need to monitor this and, you know, come up with answers if that happens. However, we'll let the industry know how this is performing.
Great. Might be something we can do in a, some of these would be great to visit in a year or two if we're still lunch and learning. So that might be one of them. I'm Spoh's asking if you can share the presentation. He's particularly interested in the detailing of the installations you've done. Is that possible, Si?
Yeah, sure. It is possible.
Okay, cool. So I think, I'm not sure what the best way, I can email it out to everyone. We can discuss what the best way to do that is. Or else I can just email it to Bo. Matt is asking, saying, thanks for the informative presentation. And are you aware of any tests and results on the durability of this recycled material? And the second question is, does it need special maintenance? Does a bit more to this question? Is there any action at the construction process and after for a better and a better life cycle and less maintenance?
Sure. Yeah. For the better life cycle, the porous lane had ensured that when you place the porous lane paver layer, it is neat and clean and flat so that there's no gaps left. We have also installed the concrete age steps on both sides so that no contamination occurs on either side of the material. And we have that layer maintained in a better quality for those seven to 10 years and there's no contamination. So durability of this recycled material, I'm sure you will find it on a Porous Lane website. And also, you know, the testing and results, as I've mentioned, we are initiating that phase of the testing. So we'll definitely keep you in the loop.
Yes, I mean, with all these floods at the moment, it just does come to mind. And I know every time we have a downpour in Melbourne, old drains don't cope. Have you got any initial sort of impressions as to how it's sort of worked? Cause it's been down for a year or so, hasn't it?
In terms of floods, it's working really well. It's soaking in the water. It's not creating any pounding on that location. In terms of water quality, we are not there yet.
Yeah, that's probably a longer term, isn't it? And you said the trees are being well watered as well, didn't you?
Trees are doing great on the side and we are pleased about that.
Yeah, that's saving potable water as well. So that's a good benefit. How consistent is the colour and are different colours available?
Well, there would be different colour available. However, Porous Lane had done a great job of maintaining that colour consistent. So as I said, they installed the paver at the last on top of the screening and they've done a really great job. I'll highly recommend them.
Yeah. So I guess people, they've got a great website. People can just go onto their website and have a chat to them as well. One more here. Is there any information about how long it takes for fines to collect, for fines to collect in the pores? I've heard it becomes less porous as fines collect and is less effective as it ages. Does it have a necessity to, do you have to clean it or do you just replace the pavement layer in every 10 years? I guess the other thing to that is, how does that compare to other paving?
Other paving, the conventional paving lasts longer. However, as you know, it's not porous. And this, as I hear, it, it can last for fifteen years, fifteen to 20 years lifetime. Within 20 years, it needs, you know, cleaning at like 10 years interval. And if we maintain, if we keep those, you know, curbs clean of any debris or, you know, any tree leaf matter, then it should really perform well because then you are allowing those pores to remain neat and clean and tidy. After, you know, I'm assuming that the councils where you're working on, you're having the maintenance regime, which is like a monthly cleanup as well on those sites. So if you clean them up on a monthly regime, you should be all right.
And, and is that normal? Like you, I guess you see people, you know, the council trucks cleaning the streets. So that's just a normal maintenance thing you do anyway?
That's correct. Yes.
We've got a great question here from Philip. Can the material be recycled at the end of life?
That's a great question and it is a pilot study. So unfortunately, I'm not in a position to answer that question. And if it does, that would be a great outcome. But we'll keep you informed if you are interested through our trial and we'll see how we come up with the recycling, the recycled product, which is even better for future.
And I guess the other thing with this is, is there is information on City of Yarra or Yarra City Council's website. So I guess you'll be updating information there as you get results as well, will you periodically?
We'll aim to do that. That's a valid point. And yeah, we, we didn't think about that, but as we are talking now, yes, we'll happily do it.
And you're open for anyone to give you a call also, Si?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Okay. Well, I will endeavor to share that presentation at the end. Or you can just email ecologic@roadprojects and request it and I'll send it off to Bo. That might be just as easy. Now, as I said, this is the last session. That's been a great session, really informative. So thank you, Vanessa, and thanks to Si. But it seems a bit strange to be talking about Christmas, it still seems to be a fair way away, I hope. But But we are heading into the end of the year and as I said, this is the last session. You can find the, all of the lunch and learns that we've done either on our knowledge share or on Ecologics YouTube account. And we are going to distribute a survey. So that will be early next week. So I would love it if you would fill the survey in. We do use that information. We can't always do everything that people ask for. But we do endeavor to change these sessions and update them. And it's really important to us that they meet your needs because we're aiming to increase the use of recycled and reused materials. And we also want to share all the stories about what, how those materials are performing on projects. So we wish you a fabulous year ahead. Reach out to us at ecologic@roadprojects.bic.gov.au or jump onto the Big Build website and you can find Ecologic there as well. Once again, thank you both. It was a great end to this series and we have about twenty-four lunch and learn sessions or we will after this up on our YouTube account. So there's plenty of information there. But this will be a good one to revisit, I think, if we can.
Yeah, well, Cheryl and Vanessa, on behalf of Yarra City Council, I thank you for providing us with an opportunity to present to the community. And yeah, it was a great session. I'm sure we'll have some more emails and questions coming to us.
Yeah, Peter Wang's asked for the brochure. I assume that's the presentation. I think what I'll do is next week, I'll just email it to everyone who's attended this session. So it'll take me a little bit of time to pull all those addresses together. But yeah, and thank you. Thanks, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Bye.
See you all.
Bye.